Agents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda this morning, November 7?
I'll move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will you go ahead and call the roll, Kristin?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to our consent agenda. Any commissioners have anything they would like removed from the agenda, from the consent this morning?
I'd move for approval, Madam Chair.
All right, I've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment on the consent agenda as far as having anything removed this morning and placed on the regular agenda? All right, if not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item one. Regular business on our agenda. First item on the agenda is something that we had discussed at our last meeting. We were gonna, we had a discussion about establishing a CO2 Transport and Storage Advisory Committee. We made some changes to the resolution as it was drafted at the time, and so that res, that new resolution is before us. So, just a little bit of discussion on it. We did change the membership of this group to seven voting members and two non-voting members. I've reviewed submissions that were made to the county for membership on this bo, on this board. What I am proposing today is that the appointed members of the board that go along with this resolution would be our Commissioner Jim, Jim Gibbon of District Two, that he would be the chair, and then Commissioner Joel Arons of District One. And then for planning and zoning members, Eric Scott, he is our planning and zoning chair. He is our at-large livestock program, person who is on planning and zoning, and I would like him to be the vice chair of this committee. And then-
Madam Chair, what was that?
I would like him to be the vice chair of the committee.
Yes.
And then also from planning and zoning is Marlene Sweeter. She's our former auditor and a Lincoln County native. She is in District Two, so I would like her as the second planning and zoning member. And then we have registered voters from Lincoln County who are, so, members of our community. Tony Ventura, he is, he has been an active person with the ordinances that have come forth, and I think his voice should be heard. Also David Anderson, he is a former representative, South Dakota representative. He was on the House Commerce and Energy Committee, and he has agreed to also be part of this committee. And then also Mark Norzey, he is a resident of Lincoln County. He's a retired former utility VP and nonprofit CFO. He was also part of our fan network that we had here a couple of years ago, and he's also agreed to be part of this committee, as I understand it. And then for the non-moting, the non-voting members, I have suggested landowner Carla Lemms, who's a current House Representative. And then the second non-voting member would be Andy Wirt, the manager from Poet down in Hudson. So, is there any discussion about those members who I would like to appoint to this committee, or any other discussion amongst the commissioners?
Do you need an official motion to approve that?
I would need official motion to approve the resolution with those members that I've stated.
I would so offer that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's gonna have to be you. I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? Now would be the time to come forward on it. All right, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Eric Scuvenek. My address is 2321 North Loop in Ames, Iowa.
Sir, will you make sure you talk into the mic so everybody can hear you, please?
So, I just introduced myself. So, I'm the Senior Director of Pipeline for Summit Carbon Solutions. You know, thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak here today. I did want to, I guess, voice my opinion that, you know, we would like the opportunity to be a part of the process and be a part of, you know, be a non-voting member of the process. We, we think that our, you know, depth of knowledge and years of expertise on pipelines would be, you know, worthy of being part of the committee. So, you know, would like you to consider that, to have, you know, let us have a say in the process. You know, we understand our position with the PUC, and we look forward to working with Lincoln County. We just ask that, as this process transpires, that, you know, consider that we need to have a fair and a reasonable ordinance that's put into place. You know, ultimately, we think that the existing FEMSA regulations are adequate. However, we understand that the counties are, are gonna have a say in this process. So, again, we would just ask that, you know, if there's a setback that's put in place, for example, that it's, that it's reasonable. You know, the landowner proposed setback, we've mapped that out, and we've overlaid it in the county.
Sure. And I don't mean to cut you off intentionally, but right now, we're just voting on this resolution to form this committee. If a resolution is brought forward from this committee, there will be plenty of time for input. It will come first back to the commission. It will go back down to planning and zoning, and then it will come back to the commission. So, there'll be plenty of opportunity for input on that. Right now, I just want input on this, the making of this committee as it stands right now.
Okay, certainly. So, to add to that, so, we've got two representatives here from Summit Carbon Solutions. Trevor Jones, who's our manager of Regulatory Affairs, he is a Lincoln County resident. And then Aaron Eldridge, who's the project manager for South Dakota, he is also a Lincoln County resident. He has moved to Lincoln County. So, again, we would just ask that we have a say or a member as part of the committee to lend our expertise on pipelines, engineering, and construction. So, that's, that's my opinion, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Anyone else from the audience wanna come up?
Yeah, this is Aaron Eldridge, 2000 West Trevy Place, Sioux Falls. Did just wanna not restate, just echo the comments that Eric did made. I know a couple of weeks back, when the resolution was, was being amended, a couple of the comments were that Summit doesn't have any members that do live in Lincoln County. And actually, prior to that point, I had relocated to Lincoln County. Trevor Jones has been in South Dakota his whole life, Lincoln County for at least three years. And so, just, would like to put that out there that, obviously, as, as Eric said, we would love to be able to be a part as a non-voting member, share our expertise with pipeline experience. But also, I'm in the county. I'm, I'm here all the time. I would love to be a resource to, to any of the commissioners, to any of the members on planning and zoning, anyone in the audience that would appreciate some additional information. I would be more than happy to offer that.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna come up? All right, any further discussion amongst the commissioners?
Madam Chair, just so you know, we'll not be voting on this matter.
Understood. Thank you. All right, I've got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Kristin, we call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, motion carries.
Madam Chair, just to, just to, there, your comments did not fall on deaf ears. I would imagine that if that committee wants to have input, that they will be surely extending you an invitation. You know, I mean, you'll have, I think you'll have ample time to present your positions or any questions that can be answered. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda. Steve, do you wanna handle that, or do you want me to skip over it to see if Dave can get here?
Chair and members of Board Commission, I'm Steve Rasmussen, your commissioned administrative officer. Just presenting on behalf of the airport, we are looking to do additional development at the airport, and we want to develop a business plan as well as additional input on development management as well as lease rates at the airport. We, we looked nationwide for firms that would be able to provide us this insight, and we are recommending Aeroplex Group Partners. And in addition to having a very comprehensive proposal, they are also the lowest-cost group for us. So, that is what we're recommending.
Any questions for Steve? All right, if not, is there a motion?
I'll still move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, Kristin, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, next item on our agenda. John Rombo?
Good morning, Commissioners. John Rombo, your building superintendent. I'm just here to, I was, got permission to reach out to get quotes for the water project at the 4H grounds, and I was able to get two of the contractors to refresh their quotes, and they stayed with the same number. That is Tipton Digging for $30,600, and Short Excavating for $39,546.92. I would like to recommend that we move forward with the Tipton Digging quote and get this project going.
Anybody have any questions for John?
John, did they indicate, excuse me, Madam Chair, John, did they indicate when they would be able to get started on this and complete the project?
They're hoping to get started yet this year, but they couldn't absolutely guarantee that to me. I think this warm-up probably is helping, gonna help that a little bit, but.
John, is there a timeline on this, that you want this complete?
Well, I was hoping to have it completed this season, this budget year, but.
Is this budgeted for this year?
It is, yes.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve the Tipton bid of $30,600 for the infrastructure improvements at the 4H, Lincoln County 4H facility.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item?
Betty Otten, 46787273, Street T. Again, I come back to why are the taxpayers paying for all this money for 4H? Where does the foundation's responsibility to come into this? I understand that, you know, this is an emotional issue, that the, the state put this, that they took it out of their budget because they couldn't afford it, so they put it on the counties, whether the counties wanted to pick it up or not. I, I totally understand it's an emotional issue, but if emotions are the reason that we spend money out of the budget from all the taxpayers, are we paying for, I don't know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts? I'm assuming that the emotional issue that the, for the bridge that's out, those people would really like to have that bridge repaired, too. So, to me, it always comes back down to why is Lincoln County paying for these projects when it should be on the 4H Foundation? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak on this issue? All right, is there anyone that wants to address the comments made by Ms. Otten? John, Wendy? And you don't have to, I'm just asking.
I just have one correction. It's called the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation, not the Lincoln County 4H Foundation.
Okay. John, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think I've probably discussed it plenty at this point, but.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the commissioners? All right, if not, Kristin, we call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
Thank you, Commissioners.
John, before you sit down, I wanna congratulate you. NACO has a policy to turn your courthouses green for veterans. And I wanna say, we got a video of what you have done to turn our courthouse green and remembering our veterans and people that are serving. So, congratulations for getting that done. I submitted that picture, by the way, to NACO, because this is going across the country, all over this great land. Every courthouse, they would like to see turned green to remember those who have served and who are serving. So, John, thank you.
You're, you're welcome. And it's, it's an easy task, since I am a veteran myself, so, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John. All right, next item on our agenda, naming rights. Morning, Wendy.
Good morning. Wendy Sweeter, Lincoln County 4H Youth Program Advisor. Chad Hazel and Christie Sweeter from the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation presented on this topic, I don't know, a couple of months ago, and asked, the commission asked for a written agreement to be presented. And so, that is what we have here, two different agreements. One is for a one-time payment, and the other is for over a three-year period.
All right. And has legal looked at all of this? Has it been vetted?
Yep.
It has no issues? All right. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, any among the commission? All right, we call the roll, Kristin?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. That motion carries. You've got the next one, too?
I'm up next again. So, I am asking the commission to reclassify and re-categorize from a 4H administrative assistant to a assistant 4H program advisor. We did have our 4H administrative assistant vacated that position in April, and at the time, I wasn't sure if that was the direction that we should continue to go, was with an administrative assistant or with a 4H program advisor. And after going with two summer interns this summer who were able to go out and do some programming at local libraries, an advisor would be the preferred way to go for that second position in my department. I will say that we have 29 school buildings across eight school districts in our county, and I would have been able to get into five of those buildings so far. In my position, I've been in this position since December of 2020. So, when I came in, we were dealing with a lot of COVID restrictions at the time, yet for a while. Last year was working on trying to secure some grant money to do some program. I mean, and now we're kinda at the point of being able to implement some of that stuff.
All right. And is there, is there a budget shift in this?
I will have Tracy talk about that.
One of the questions that I have.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Humphrey, the HR Director. So, as you can see in the facts and vettings, we talked about the cost and classification for this role. In the process to be able to afford the change with the classification, it does require education, so that's why we're having to move it from the grade that it is currently of a 104 to be reclassified as a 106. What our goal to do, though, is to have it be cost-neutral or a cost savings to the county. In order to do that, Wendy has agreed to remove her summer intern position. So, that's an individual who is, like, we had two of those this summer. They work just during the summer month, summer months to help us with the programming. So, as you can see on the bottom of the facts and vetting sheet, the current cost for the admin assistant is $44,000. The summer intern is $7,900. Our proposed assistant advisor would be about $5,100, I mean, I'm sorry, not $5,100, $51,000. So, it would be a cost savings of around $900 to the county to approve this reclassification.
And then, does that include benefits and everything?
So, because the position was already in the budget with benefits, there's no additional cost there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any questions for staff? All right, any public input on this agenda item?
So, this would be a 40-hour-per-week position?
Correct.
You had one before, didn't you, Wendy?
We had an administrative assistant in my time here, but in the past, there has been different arrangements in the office, so.
All right, thanks.
Approximately, what is your, your turnout, you know, when you do chicks in the classroom or babysitting clinics and so forth? Are you talking a dozen? Are you talking three dozen?
So, chicks in the classroom is done as part of a classroom project at a school, so that would be whoever, however many students they have in their classroom. A babysitting clinic was the first time that we've done one, was this summer in Lenox, and I think we had about 20 people, 20 kids at that. So, that was just a first try on that. So, my goal was to try and do it in our other communities, but just being one person did not have enough time or resources to get to all of those.
And some of these things are addressed in after-school programs, correct?
Such as, like-
And some of these are done in after-school programs, like latchkey programs as well?
We have not done that in my time here.
All right, other questions or discussion? All right, if not, then we can go ahead with the roll. Do you have motions?
Vote for approval.
We have motions, all right.
Do you?
Yeah, we have motions.
We did?
We don't have motions, okay.
We don't have one. I move for approval, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second? All right, we got a motion and a second. Now, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next agenda item. Tracy, you've got that one?
Yes. Good morning again. So, we're asking for the board to approve the request to hire a temporary snow removal employee for the highway shop. In 22, we hired a temporary seasonal employee who was just on call for snow events due to us being short-staffed. This hire was only utilized for that when we either didn't have everyone there, or there was long snow events, like we all remember from 2023 in January. Currently, we are short two staff members in the highway shop, so our goal is to be able to bring this individual back. It's listed as his name and salary is in there. The position would be only authorized to work until the department is fully staffed or the winter season ends. And again, this position request would be cost-neutral for the county as it only is utilized when other staff members are unable to report for snow events.
Okay, so, if I'm following, and maybe I'm not, so, we have an open position with highway right now?
Yeah, we have two, we have a diesel mechanic and an op supervisor, and both of those positions help when there are snow events. And because those positions are vacant, we're asking that we be able to have a temporary snow person in there, so that way, we're able to fully clean the roads in case we get the snow that we got earlier this year.
Okay. So, this is not a new, I mean, this person's gonna understand that when those positions are filled?
Yes, yeah, that's what will be part of the terms of, like, in their offer letter to explain that. And that's what they, like I said, they did this for us last year, did a great job. And again, they only showed up when we had a snow event, particularly on the weekends.
All right.
Terry, are these people available yet? Are these people available yet?
Which people?
To fill in. I mean, I know what you're looking for, but I mean, they're available.
Yes.
Okay.
He has requested to come back if we need the help.
Oh, good.
All right, heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll move to it, please.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Drew DeGroot.
Morning, Commissioner. Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office, seeking approval of a cellphone stipend for the State's Attorney's Office's youth diversion coordinator. You'll note that it's for $45 a month. That is $5 more than the county's policy, but this is a grant position, and the grant called for a $45 stipend for, a phone stipend.
All right.
I'll move to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have Board Action to Approve Indigent Council Overflow Contract with Myers-Bilian. You're handling that?
Yes, I am. Again, Commissioner Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office, seeking approval of two contracts, two overflow contracts, one for the remainder of this year with Myers-Bilian, and then one three-year contract with Myers-Bilian to handle indigent council representation. You'll note that the remainder of this year is for $98,000. Next year, at the beginning of the contract, is $210,000 with a 3% increase a year over year for that three- for that three years, seeking approval. And I can answer any questions.
Yeah. Is the overflow contract, is that, is there a cap on that or is that just till the end of the year at X amount of dollars a case?
There is a, there is a cap on it from the case.
For the number of cases?
Yes.
How many cases are we going to take?
I'd have to pull it up.
Oh, okay.
Drew, are we running ahead, behind? What's the numbers? I mean, are we?
We are running behind.
We are?
Yeah. That's the reason for the overflow contract for the rest of this year. We had a contract in place. We met the numbers. So now the judges are appointing private counsel, which is an additional cost to the county when we don't have a contract in place. So we wanted to make sure we have a long-term contract for a cost savings perspective to the county, and that's why we went with the three-year.
Okay.
Yeah, it's much more expensive to do it on a per-case basis.
So for this, the remainder of this year, it calls for 140 misdemeanor cap. Should, we may get to that even at the end of this year.
Yeah, is that, I mean, is that tracking?
Yeah. It's, it's pretty close to that. We, we may hit it right on, actually, from what we've been tracking.
Okay.
And then if, do you want the additional cap for the other contract?
Yeah. What is that?
So that calls for 120 felony cases up to a Class C felony and 180 for all Class One, or Class One or Class Two misdemeanors. So we're looking at 300 case cap per year.
And that's just overflow on what, on what we already have on, under contract?
Correct, yeah. And one of the reasons why Myers Billion, we're asking for selection of them is it's the firm that best meets the needs of the county, being able to handle the higher-level felonies and more misdemeanors.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? All right. Can I get a motion, please?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? Any discussion amongst commissioners? All right. If not, Kristen, we call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries.
Crime is an expensive item.
It sure is. Next item on our agenda.
Steve Rasmussen, your CAO. So this is board action to approve and execute the agreement of the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number One, Labor Council. And this is for a term of three years, starting January 1 of 2024. There's also a side letter which would bring the FOP into our new PTO policy. And that will happen effective December 3, prior to the start of this contract, which is January 1. This particular agreement, from the county's perspective, brings a lot of the benefits into alignment with our county policy. We had a lot of benefits that were similar, but on different terms. This will help as far as implementation, simplify the agreement. And the pay brings our deputies into the market rate. We did a salary survey for the region, and this will bring us competitively up to that point. We're not exceeding the market, but we're meeting the market and the demand for positions for recruitment.
All right. Anybody have questions for Steve? All right. If not, can I get a motion, please?
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. Any further discussion amongst the commissioners? I just want to say thanks for all your work getting this, getting this done.
Congratulations.
Kristen, we call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. That motion carries. Next item on our agenda, Dakota Access Pipeline Letter. Does everybody have a chance to read that? Yes? All right. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Right. So this is just a request for a letter of support for the Dakota Access Pipeline with the Army Corps of Engineers regarding uneasement. There's a few options, and there are a few could potentially temporarily suspend or permanently suspend the pipeline. And that would then divert some of the energy to the rail as opposed to the pipeline. And they reached out requesting a letter of support for consideration.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Steve? All right. If not, also here today is David Owen with the South Dakota Chamber of Commerce. Did you want to come up and say anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chair, members of the commission, David Owen, South Dakota Chamber of Commerce and Industry. I live at 4227 East Thornwood Place in Sioux Falls. I think the most important thing to establish early is that this pipeline isn't that pipeline. Dakota Access, sorry. Dakota Access Pipeline was completed using a temporary environmental impact statement clear back in 2017, and it's been taking oil from North Dakota down to Illinois ever since. During the course of time, they are going through the full environmental impact statement by the Corps of Engineers. This is a public process. They've issued their report. They've recommended five items, three of which would involve reducing the flow or stopping the flow of the pipeline. The chamber sees this as a threat to our economic development. Domestic oil is important. As noted by your staff, if the oil isn't going through the pipeline, it's going to go on the rails and compete with corn and soybeans and everything else that has trouble getting on the rail now. And most important to you as a county commission, if the oil stops, pipelines are centrally assessed. That's part of your tax base. That will reduce that value, and that will shift those taxes onto your other taxpayers. This is a public process. County commissions are a credible source and a meaningful source of input to the Corps of Engineers. This letter would mean a great deal in terms of keeping their focus on that pipeline, completing the environmental impact statement in a way that leaves the pipeline viable. We encourage you to send the letter and would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Owen?
I can't vote on this one either.
Okay. With that, any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, we call the roll, please.
We got a motion.
Oh, gosh. I'm doing that twice now today.
I will offer that motion to send a letter of support.
Can I get another second on it?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for, again, I unfortunately do the fact that the pipeline runs through some of my family's line, I choose to, or I believe it's practical to recuse myself as not to have any conflict of interest arise.
All right. Thank you for that comment. All right. Now, is there any public input? Okay. Now, can we call the roll? Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. All right. Motion carries. Next item, is opportunity, yes. Next is opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. If anybody would like to come up who is present today, now would be the time to do that.
Good morning. Mona Holman.
Good morning.
412 East First Street in Canton. I see that the agenda was revised and the letter from the DOC is no longer on the agenda? Is that correct?
It's, it is not on the agenda.
Okay.
Obviously.
Okay. So any explanation you can offer for that? I have an assumption, but I'd like to hear it from you.
Actually, public comment is not for us to answer questions from the public, but if you want to, go ahead and say what you want to say, that would be fine.
No. I was just curious about why it was struck from the agenda with no explanation.
Thank you.
I think the citizens are deserved an explanation.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up?
Don Hoffman, 473 272, 273rd Street, Harrisburg. Just some of the things that I've seen happen in the county here in the last year, two years or so. About a month ago, I sat and watched the land sale east of Harrisburg that's been in our, my mom's side of the family for over 100 years. The price stalled out at about $11,500 until they started talking about housing eligibility. That price went up to just about $14.5 once they said, oh, we can move those housing eligibility's out along the road. I thought, eh, gosh, you know, it'd been nice if a guy could buy that, but it didn't happen. So I went back, started thinking. What was the intent of housing eligibility's when they started back in the 70s? One housing eligibility for 40 acres. We don't want to get them too close, you know, because we've got sewer lines and stuff like that. We don't want people, you know, we might contaminate the ground and that. 70s and 80s rolled around, farm crisis rolled around. Boy, you know, it'd be nice if them farmers could sell off one of those housing eligibility's and maybe keep them on the farm. The intent was also to bring a child back or a spouse or somebody back to the farm to keep rural America, rural Lincoln County as rural. That was intent. Okay. So, yeah, we'll let them farmers sell off some of them housing eligibility's. Let's see if we can keep them back on the farm after the crisis. A lot of them didn't, didn't make it anyway. It wasn't enough to help them. Well, you know, we sold that housing eligibility, and it's on a gravel road, and I really don't like that. Can I move that up to the highway? Okay. We changed the rules again. Yeah. Let's let them move that housing eligibility up along the highway. Well, then pretty soon your townships and your county people, the snowplow operators said, well, jeez, you know, we got all these driveways that we got to worry about when we're plowing snow. Well, how about if we just couple them all together? Make all these housing eligibility's, three, four of them in one spot? Then the snowplow operators only have to worry about that quarter mile where all the mailboxes are and everything. Oh, yeah. Okay, let's do that. Let's, let's change the rules and regulations a little bit more. Drive around out in the country right now, people. The intent of that ordinance was to keep Lincoln County rural. We are not rural. We've got housing develops, you know? I got grandkids, 17 years old, 13. They're more interested in farming. Try to find a piece of property, agricultural land, that has a housing eligibility or that has a place where you could start a livestock operation. Searle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Your time has elapsed. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else from the audience want to come up and speak? I was, I was going to circle back to, you can, if you want to come up, because I might...
Is there any other, I don't know if there's any other comments?
I might be wrong. The request for information on the new men's prison is...
Yeah. My, my letter and the response from the DOC is in the, under reports. It was never on the agenda, so just for clarification.
Right. And is that available on the website, then?
Yes.
It is. Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to come up and give public comment this morning? All right. If not, then we'll move on to commissioner reports. Are there any commissioner reports this morning?
What are you looking at me?
Because you always have something to say.
No. We don't have anything to report this morning.
Okay. Commissioner Gibbon, anything?